And then we can do a roll call. Uh, shall Laura, do you want to call out or shall I call out? You're muted. Laura, you're muted.
If you like, that's fine.
Okay, Diane Mead, acting chair.
I'm Patty Hipper.
Heather Gutz.
Mark Iquist.
Scott also.
And I think that was Chad who was fighting with with Scott. So anyway, so welcome everyone. Uh, so we are here to continue the application number 21 dash four of Ronald and Stacy Stacy Morano. Am I saying that correctly, Ron?
Close enough, Myron.
Okay.
Diane, can I just interrupt you for just one quick second? I just need you, if you're going to appoint an alternate to sit tonight?
Uh, I don't think we need to appoint any alternates. I think we have all our.
Cause technically Chad is an alternate and.
Can we, can we fill one, can we fill one more spot?
So we can have five.
We can, we can have five. May I ask, was there someone who was an alternate last time who filled a spot?
There was only four last time.
Um, okay, Chad, would you fill in? I'd like to, you know, keep this equitable. If you would, if you would fill in Chad, and then next time, Scott, if we need to have an alternate serve, we will, would you then be willing to do that?
Uh, Diane, it's actually.
Mark, I'm sorry, it's Mark.
Oh, okay.
Mark then?
Okay.
Sure. Yeah.
So then we're good.
That sounds good. Yeah.
Okay, but everyone, everyone can weigh in. Uh, so once again, we are here to continue the application number 21 dash four of Ronald and Stacy Morano. Applicant owner for a certificate of appropriateness to construct a single family residence with accessory structures at 36 East Wheaton Street, Zone R40. Um, and if I could just, um, before we go in, thank you, everyone for coming to the, the special meeting. Um, Ron, I would like to thank you for, um, getting additional information and responding. I wasn't here, obviously. But, uh, viewing some of the comments and you provided the, um, the site specs, which I have to say, clarified a lot and, and were very, very helpful in, in viewing this. Um, also, I think I have an updated picture showing a change in the stone in the front of the, of the house. Is, is, is that correct? Okay. And I think we'll talk about that, that. But, um, but thank you for, for, because it's very hard on Zoom doing this to see materials and things. So thank you. Thank you so much. Um, it's, it's, I feel much more comfortable with the site plan now, seeing how the house sits vis a vis the Browns' house and the HIPA house. You're, you're set, you're, you're set way back. So hey Ted. Uh, so I feel much more comfortable with that because you are now sitting between two very historic homes. They are over 200 years old on, on either side of you. And so, um, as you know, our goal in the district is to, um, maintain uh, the character of the district and, and, um, with, with your house, uh, where it is will, will help in not overpowering and anything else. Um, I, I did have two questions before we go back to, um, the questions that were raised last time. Um, and this has been described as a farmhouse. And in looking at the picture, um, I, I'm just cognizant that we want to make sure that what we're doing, um, with the architectural details are consistent with what a farmhouse, historic farmhouse would look like. And, um, and I'm questioning the, just the front door. It's the, the double doors with the, with the two side lights, which is really having the double doors in a farmhouse is really not consistent with what you would see in a farmhouse. Um, I think the door itself is, is very pretty. And my suggestion, and, and I would be, um, I want to hear what other commissioners say, is to bring it down to a single door, keep the beautiful door that you have, use the skylights, uh, the side lights rather. But, um, it is, even if you look at our more formal, um, residences in, in the district, you don't have a double door like that. We, we do have some solid double doors, but that are consistent with a very old, for instance, the Alfeld House. Um, it's, it's a very different type of architecture. So, uh, I, I would put that out for, um, for consideration. And the second point that I'd like to, um, submit is, uh, the windows. You have, um, you have great double hung windows, which are totally appropriate. But I would, um, it has a much more modern look. You have two over two. And what would be more consistent with a farmhouse, um, especially, I mean, if you want to keep, uh, an open panel down below, but a farmhouse typically, um, would have multi pane windows. It was, um, very expensive for a farmer to have, um, solid big panes of glass. And so what would happen, uh, is that's why you have the multi pane windows. So if you would consider doing, you know, a six over one, a nine over one, I mean, you could do a six over six, something like that, but just the, the two over two is a very much, uh, a more modern feel to it. Um, and I, I pulled up just to show, I don't know, Laura, if you can pull up that picture. I showed, I, I was just going online, looking for other new construction farmhouses and I found something just out there. Um, that shows both, um, the front door, a, a, a type of front door that I think would be more in keeping with the farmhouse and gives just one suggestion for the double hung windows with, with multi pane.
Sure. Love this.
So this is, and I'm not saying this is what you have to do, but it's just a little, I, this just struck me as being very similar to the kind of feel, because we want to keep that farmhouse feel without. Um, so anyway, I'm putting it out there. Other commissioners, please weigh in, but, um, uh, those are my comments.
Okay.
Uh, Ron, I don't know how, you know, what, what your reaction is to this.
No, I, I, I don't, um, I like, yeah, the, the, the single door is fine. I think, um, my, I think our concern was with the duller doors is to have a wider opening. But if we did a single door that was, you know, on, on a bit larger side, um, I think my wife would be fine with that. She's not on the call today. She's away, but, um, I think she'd be fine with that. And I just got to take in the windows a bit because obviously it's a little different look than we were designing. So, um.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I, I know in one of the original descriptions, um, from the architect, uh, it was a, a modern farmhouse.
Yes.
And again, uh, if you were not in the historic district, it's fabulous, but we have to keep it consistent with, um, the historic nature of, of the neighborhood.
Totally get it.
So that's, you know, again, and I'm not saying that you have to do a specific window, but I would ask that you would look at this because I think it's more in keeping. The, the, um, the two over two is a very, a more modern look.
Modern, right.
So, um, uh, anyways.
Yeah. So this is, this is Paul Sallina, the architect. And, um, so yeah, I, I understand what you're saying about the, the divided light up above. I'm, and I'm looking at the, at, at the rendering. And, um, you know, I think we could certainly do something with a divided light. I think that these windows are potentially wider than the ones that Ron and Stacy have as an individual window. So I'm not sure the nine over nine is going to look proportionally correct. But I think we could definitely do better than the, you know, than the single divided light. I mean, we could definitely look to see if we could get certainly six.
Paul, I was, I, I was looking through, um, I was driving around the neighborhood today. If anyone thinks I'm a stalker, I apologize. But we have, um, there are lots of variations and that's why I'm saying I, this is just a suggestion. It doesn't have to be nine over one or six over one. Just something that is different, just the, the two over two is not, um, consistent with the, with the tradition. And again, keep in mind, not only are we trying to keep it historically consistent, but we have these two houses on either side that are, um, you know, there are the grand doms in Simsbury, if you will, because these are, these are very old houses and, and kind of, um, are, are trademarks of our, our historic district. Uh, and, and actually while I, while we're talking with you, I just want to confirm, I'm looking at the difference between the original rendering, which had like eyebrow windows and the second one where they are gone. Um, can I confirm that the eyebrow windows are not, they have been taken out of the?
The eyebrow window? You're talking about the transom windows?
Yes.
Transom? Yeah, those are taken off.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I just.
Now, the windows are taller. Uh, the individual windows themselves are narrower. Just looking at one of the elevations, I could pull it up if I need to. Well, we, we can definitely do better than the two over two. We'll have to really evaluate the proportions of the glass to see which, you know, what we can get in a row of, of, of three, but I think we could come up with something.
That, that, that would be, I think that would be great, Paul.
I certainly think that's definitely doable.
And Ron, are you okay with that too?
Yeah, yeah, to- totally, totally.
Okay.
Yeah, we know. Diane, I think, you know, at, at the end of the day, you know, we're trying to build a house that will fit in the neighborhood. Um, that will appease my wife and, and make her happy. Um, but most importantly, we want to keep the theme of the neighborhood and, and, and not, not put something up that's gonna, you know, cause anybody concerned that we're, you know, moving away from the historic na- nature of the neighborhood. And that's something that appeals to us and that's why we want to move there. Um, you know, we've always, you know, as I said on the earlier two weeks ago call, um, you know, I used to live on Lucy Way. So we drove through East Wheaton all the time. We frequented Rosedale Farm. Um, you know, friends with some of the people on, on the board. Um, you know, admired Chad's house, uh, when I didn't even know him, loved that house, still love it. So we, we wanna, we wanna build something that, um, is gonna make the other neighbors, you know, proud to be neighbors of ours. So.
That's fair. Well, welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Um, and then one other, I, and I know this is circling back to something that some people had asked last time, um, about the stone. And I, and I, again, I, I see you've reduced, um, the, the face of it. Uh, but I did go into the handbook and it did, um, for those or anyone who has pulled up the handbook on page 13, it does, um, discuss the use of redstone and brownstone on foundations. And once again, looking through the neighborhood and even, um, uh, side streets too, it, it talks about that, uh, in the district, it's predominantly redstone Ashler slash brownstone. Um, and now, and, and this is just, you know, being very practical, Ron, what you, what we are concerned with is what we see from the main road. And I noticed like this, um, the, uh, looking at the back of your house, I think you had the stone there too. And frankly, if you like that look in the back of your house, go for it, you know, around the pool and, and all of that, but it's what's visible from the road. Um, so just keeping that in mind, our, our, you know, that, that's what we're concerned with. So if there's a way, you could, you could do both is my, is my point, you know, as long as we don't see it.
Well, I think, I think we could, I mean, if this, if the gray stone's a concern, I think we could probably just leave it foundation and not put up any stone in the front. We're not talking about a lot of, uh, linear feet that we have to worry about because of the front porch being as large as it is, um, you know, almost taking up the entire front part of the house.
Did you, did you lower the porch in the, it, it looks, looking at the two, um?
No, we just lowered.
No, actually, yeah, no, this is Paul. So actually, no, we didn't. I think that, that what we did is we eliminated the stone that was above the porch deck. So it looked as though it's been lowered, but it really hasn't. It's actually an elevation visual thing. And to Ron's point, the stone is actually just on the foundation level itself. So that's what, that's what it was. I mean, we did add a little bit more of a brown tint to it, but to your point, it is still a little bit more gray looking. Um, so I'll, I'll leave that, you know, we didn't, uh, you know, didn't want to start a contrast with the white, but you know, if there's a, if there's a palette that, um, Stacy and Ron, you know, want to use in, in, in place, that's fine. Or to Ron's point, he wants to stick with the concrete foundation up in front. I think that's, you know, leave that up to them.
Okay, that, that actually, my questions. So I, I open up to any of the other.
Can I? Yeah. Can I, um, just kind of tag on to the windows about the windows? So in this, um, drawing I'm looking at, which is a si- A 604, um, the windows in the upper level are two over two, where the windows in the bottom level in the front, um, the two banks of windows, those are one over one. So is the intent to have different styled windows? Um, as shown here or, or no?
I would say probably not. I don't think those lines showed up. It's a graphic issue.
Okay. Okay. So whatever is on the top level will.
Will be on the bottom. Yeah, those, yeah, I think that's simply a graphics issue.
Okay.
So that would not be the intent.
Okay. Um, and, um, Diane, last week we had, um, at the end of the call, we had discussed a few questions for them to get back to us. And I believe, um, Paul, you had written those questions down. Do you guys have those in front of you that you could, um, respond to those questions now today?
I don't know if I specifically have all of them. I think that they were, um, specifically talking about the stone, which we've addressed, uh, by lowering that down just to the foundation level. The transom windows, which we removed, uh, and increased the height of the, of, of the windows. Uh, the door, which we've discussed, was one of the items that was, was raised. Um, you know, we were presenting this door and we, we've kind of covered, covered that. Um, the other thing that we were asked to do was to provide links to all of the different materials that were being used and those around your drawings so that you can see the, the type of fiberglass shingles we were using. Uh, the Marvin Elevate, uh, window, uh, the type of AZAC trim around the, um, around the columns. Um, the garage door style, I think was, was one of the others. So that is a more, um, you know, carriage house farmhouse style garage door with a mahogany color. It's a metal door. So that was one of the things that we adjusted. Um, it was.
Paul, quick question. Does the, the, um, garage door color match what will be for the front door?
Yes.
Okay. And is the front door wood or is that metal?
The front door is, is wood. It's mahogany.
Okay.
I mean, I could share my screen if that would be easier for everyone, but you know. Um, there was discussions about lighting. So we added the lighting that we would be having on the front porch. Um, the siding dimension was discussed and we've noted in here that there's a four inch siding width. Um, we had a discussion about gutters and we were, and noted that we've got a five by five gutter around the porch. And, uh, I think a three by four rain leader coming down, uh, and, and gutters on the lower portion of the house. And the upper level would, would drain down to that area and then down. So I know we discussed that. Um, we, we discussed the chimney, uh, cause that material was not indicated correctly. That's actually, this would be a stone material.
Um, and so, so do you have, um, do you have a drawing of that?
Yeah. If you look at the eight, if you look at A201, will you want me to share this and I can point that out?
Sure. Yeah, that'd be a big help, Paul. Thank you.
That'd be better?
Yeah.
Lost my. Hang on. Can everyone see that?
Um, yeah, it's kind of small, but yes.
Okay.
I can see it.
So, you know, these were, we have the gutter line. I'll go to the rendering here. So the gutter is across the, the front of the porch and down. Uh, the stone, as you can see here, this line that goes right through here is the first floor of the house. So the stone is down at the foundation level. Um, and the chimney, which is back in through here. So this is actually a gas fireplace inside. So it's not a wood burning fireplace. So the clearance required, you know, dimensionally from that flue to the chimney is quite different. So we don't have to raise this up higher than the, than the ridge line. So it would not be visible.
Wow, okay.
It is clad. Yeah. I mean, you know, technically you can run these metal pipe up and you're done, but this is, this is actually clad in, in the stone product. Um, you know, a lot of these fireplaces are, are, you know, are even zero clearance. So, but this is,
Yeah.
we checked that clearance out and that's fine. So you'll, I'll, I'll point this out to you. This happens to be in the rear of the porch and these are the dormers. Um, we had a larger dormer across the back, which was in both locations. Here's the garage.
Oh, I'm not seeing where your cursor is.
See my cursor? Yeah.
I do not see it. No, I really, on that, I see the front elevation, number one is really all I see in the top left of it. I don't know if it's just me.
Yeah, that's, that's the same for me. I just see the.
Yeah, that's all I see.
Very left side of the front elevation.
So I think, Paul, if you scroll down, um, and over to the right, then we would probably be able to see where your cursor is. But essentially I think we're seeing one quarter of, if it's 11 by 17, for example, we're seeing the top left quadrant of that 11 by 17.
Yeah, it looks like it might even be, maybe you moved it, Paul, but it's frozen. Maybe, maybe stop sharing, scroll over.
I'm gonna start sharing and I'm gonna reshare it.
Yeah, I think sometimes it just freezes.
I think it just froze up on me.
There you go.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
We see the garage.
Yeah, no problem. It's a, I've got this on two screens and it may have just froze up. So this is the garage side, you know, this lower, um, elevation, you can see that this is the revised garage doors.
Yeah, Paul, I would mention, yeah, Paul, I would mention too, you know, the, one of the questions or, or, um, modifications we made was the sightline on the garage side. Um, I think it might've been Chad who said, you know, look, obviously from a roof perspective, look long. So we broke up those windows into two separate dormers to kind of break it up a bit. Uh, and actually I, I like it more, um, this way as well. Um, but we, we made that modification from two weeks ago as well.
Ron, is there anything else? Cause it, cause we, we kind of started in with questions, but, and Paul, you started to address it. I think we can see some of the things you've done.
Right.
What are we missing? I think, I think the, the stone coming down and, and you guys probably see it, it kind of dramatically changes the look, which I think that stone coming down looks great. Ron, thanks for pointing out the windows, because, uh, I, I couldn't quite remember, but, um, those things do, do make a difference.
No, they do. They really do. I, I, when, when Laura, who works with Paul, made those changes and sent, sent it to me, I was like, wow, it really, it really makes a difference, um, just visually and, and, and the straight line getting opened up, um, I think adds a lot of character to that side.
The, the one thing I did, uh, and this is probably just editorializing, um, because I have a long tail on my house. Um, it, it's pretty long, but I broke the roof line. Um, so originally it was a single roof, roof line, and it's not an easy thing to accomplish, quite frankly, but I wound up stepping it down, um, to, to break it up. So if you ever pass it, you just imagine it being one single line and it's not. So it dramatically changes it. And I think, you know, something like that with the dormers, um, can certainly help a lot.
Yeah. But I think, I think Paul, in this view too, from the side, you can see the chimney coming up and it's below, you know, the top level of the roof for the front view. So you, it, it, Paul's point, you don't even see it from the road.
So in elevation, in the elevation above that, um, the chimney there, right, that we're seeing, what chimney is that? Is that?
That's the same.
Is there only one chimney in the house?
Yep, that's the same chimney.
Okay, so.
That's a back.
That's the rear of the house, correct?
Backside of the house.
That's, that's correct. That's the rear of the house. Yep.
It'll be tough to see that chimney.
Yeah, you're not gonna see it.
You'll, you'll see that chimney from the neighbors. Yeah, you won't see it anywhere from the front.
Unless he invites us to the pool. If we, if he invites us to the pool.
Then you'll see it. Then you'll see it.
Then you'll see the chimney. That's true.
So if we see it on elevation two on A202, how it, right, it goes above the roof line over the garage, but.
Goes above the roof line of the garage. That's correct, which is right here.
So Mark, if you were, if you were driving south on East Wheaton Street, you could potentially see it, but, but I am assuming this is set so far back now that you wouldn't see it.
You wouldn't see it.
Yeah.
And there's, you know, it's just, it's not concerned that there's anything wrong with the chimney. It's just trying to, um, get perspective of, of what it is. I think, uh, I think the chimney is great. You guys did it in stone versus last, um, last time it was, uh, uh, clavoured or, you know, deciding to match the house. But the one thing I may say though, is that, um, you know, understanding that, that it, it's a gas furnace, right? So the chimney is not really doing a bunch of fireplaces, if you will. I think for the size of the house, to me, scale is a huge thing and always will be. I think this, the size of the chimney is too small um, for the scale of the house. Now, you know, I, I don't like doing fake things, but even to have something look a little more substantial may, uh, lend itself to the overall feeling of the house and, and representing it in a better way than, than just kind of this small chimney, which is just being used really, um, for its intended purpose of, uh, exhausting, you know, the, the furnace. Um, does that make sense, guys?
Well, I guess the only thing I would say, Mark, is since this is not visible from the street, we need to be careful. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I mean, sure. Okay. Sure. It, um, I, I would, are we sure about that? I guess. Are we sure that it's certainly not visible from the street, the chimney?
I can guarantee you.
It's not. Okay.
Because it's, it's, the, the roof line is, is, and I, Paul, you and I talked about it, it's, it's at least a foot and a half, maybe two feet above where the chimney would end, correct?
Oh yeah, absolutely. I mean, if you take a look at this perspective.
Okay.
Up in here, as you would be seeing the house as you were driving, you know, down East Wheaton Street. Um, you know, you, this would be the view that you would see.
Okay.
And the chimney would be visually, you know, well below that upper ridge. And certainly you would never, even though it might be in a flat plane, slightly taller than the garage or that end, uh, dormer, a larger area on the upper level, you'd never see it because of the angle.
Paul, can you, can you bring up the site plan again, just so we can see where, um, where the house is vis a vis?
Right. So that perspective that I was just showing you is right in this angle here. And that, you know, and the chimney that we're talking about is right here in the, you know, obviously in the center of the house.
One, one question, this is, this is kind of a left turn, but I was looking at the, um, at the property and there are a lot of trees. And I was wondering, um, what the plan is in terms of taking out trees, leaving trees, um, again, keeping privacy between, um, the houses, you know, to the north and south, um, which could also impact on seeing the chimney, if you will.
So, Paul, can you go to the aerial? So Paul, can you go to the aerial view, if you could?
Uh.
Or I I could, I guess.
You know what? Let me stop sharing, Ron, because I don't think I have that in my images here.
Okay.
Could you get it?
Yeah, let me go to just go find it.
Get it, Ron?
I just got to get back to the zoom.
You want me to get it? I got it.
You got it? Okay.
Better?
Yeah. So if you look at the um, I'll take your cursor that the center, the 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 house is going to sit now a little little to the right. Well, yeah, right there. So the house is going to sit there. The front of the house will be about there going straight back. Um, and so our intention is to try to keep um some of the Christmas tree type structures to the it's almost better if I was using my mouth. Um, let me try to share my screen.
You want to do that? I'll if you found it, you can do it.
I I I found it.
Okay, great.
Everybody see that?
Not yet. I do now.
Yeah.
So the house south is roughly going to sit in this area. Okay, these trees here will all remain. These trees here will all remain. Um, the driveway is going to, as you could, so as you can see from the site plan, um, we're dealing with this utility box um cable vision right now. They they claim they have an easement to be here. Um, we don't think they do. They have yet to prove they do. Um, only thing we've seen in the town records is that there is an easement for the utility box to be here. We're going to ask them to move it to somewhere around here. So it's going to be between these trees what we're going to keep. And these trees here, there's a group of a lot of pines and stuff. We're going to do our best to keep um a lot of these for for privacy for us and and obviously for Patty as well. And then this this part back here will will be cleared a bit. We're going to keep a bunch of these back here because the property line runs this way and then kind of angles this way and then comes back this way. So um so to answer your question, Diane, a lot of these will stay, all of these will stay. Some of these here will stay and as many trees as over here, we're going to try to keep.
Yeah, I I guess I'm just thinking, you know, good neighbor policy, trying to keep privacy on 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 both sides. That's, you know.
But but I mean, the house for here, we have to clear these, obviously.
Sure, right, right. You don't you don't want a tree, grow.
No, but our intention is to to try to keep as many because I, you know, I obviously we like the privacy and I think it adds. You know, if you look at Ted's house, he's got a bunch of trees in here, you know, that just add a lot of character to the
Absolutely, great.
Diane, just out of curiosity, do do we actually, does the historic district commission have any purview at all on?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not. I'm just I'm just like stirring the pot.
Yeah.
So you No, I'm just, but I but it's a good question. I I, you know, you know, I don't want to take the clear the entire lot and then replant. If I, you know, if I could save trees, I'm going to do so.
And I'm being a rabble rouser, Chad. I'm sorry.
I know.
I know with um with thirty four East Sweetog, our Ted's house, it is a good sized house and he has a lot of trees in the front that really from the road, you don't even see the house. It really minimizes the size of the house. Um, but it sounds like it's going to be very open where the house is going to be.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Maybe you can plant some trees.
Yeah, no, I mean, we will plant some, but unfortunately where the house begins, um, that's necessitates us to take out a lot of that center, this center area here. Um, you know, we walked the property, you know, probably five, six, seven times already. And then, you know, obviously, once we get approval, we'll we'll tag some stuff to keep and then kind of reevaluate after the initial clearing to see, you know, what we can still keep, what we could may possibly move and and things of that nature. So.
Yeah, I, you know, I I think and and Chad, to to your point, um, while we do not have purview over landscaping, maintaining the character of of the district is important and part of that is making sure we're not um, you know, clear cutting everything, which we can't.
And again, that's a that's a tough call.
Yeah.
Because this whole area is clear cut, remember? So I I just say we drop, you know, Ron, you've answered the question.
All right, thanks. Well, I'll stop sharing.
Or just, Ron, just while I think of it, just because I was looking at that photo and uh, you also provided a clean site plan, which was one of the things, Mark, you had asked for.
Yeah.
It seems to me that that Ron and Paul have kind of touched everything I think we talked about last time. But I did, I I don't know if I missed this last time. It says proposed barn. Um, but that's not part of the application, right?
No, it's not. Um, I'm I'm going to
It's another day.
It's going to be another day next year sometime. Um, so I'm not looking for approval for that at this meeting. Um, we'll 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 resubmit when the when the time's right and I'm ready.
And I think the the other question was, there was a question about lighting. Has that been addressed?
Yeah, we've we've addressed the lighting. Um, you know, we we showed what the front light, the front porch lights will be and we showed what the uh lighting will be above the garage and that's in the
And there's no other lamp posts or anything between the house and the street.
Not going to do a lamp post. No. And I think we even gave a sample of the um mailbox as well.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Diana, just, you know, you raised the question about the stone, the gray, which, you know, was probably a first reaction I would have also. But but are there any examples um in the area of using, uh, I don't know if it's a flagstone or what it would be? And and certainly there's a preponderance of the redstone all over over the town, quite frankly. But I'm wondering uh if there's any examples of the gray because um again, I think it improved. Again, and these are opinions, right? But um I think it improved it quite a bit, taking it off the porch and bringing it down, um, so to speak.
Yeah, I don't know of examples of that. As I said, I drove around, um, you know, our street and and side streets. And I also found in the uh the handbook, it 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 says that the foundations are predominantly redstone and brownstone. Um, so I I we can interpret that as we will. Now you can do, um, I I was actually looking up um the the redstone and there are more formal um forms of the redstone, if if that's what what you're looking for. Um, I I'm not sure, Paul, what the the architectural look is, but um it was referred to as redstone ashler slash brownstone in the handbook. And the redstone ashler can is is covers a number uh within that color range and within that stone, there are a number of ways of doing it. And Paul is Googling right now. You're muted, Paul.
Just as well, because that's the stone is not what came up. Let's see, redstone ashler.
I think the quote the quote from the handbook is that foundations within the historic district are predominantly redstone slash uh redstone ashler slash brownstone.
Yeah, so so um so I'm I'm looking at one here. Maybe I could uh share this and then we can talk about this. This one right here, you see that one?
Yes.
It's a little bit of a tighter stone than what we were showing, but it has a a combination of a gray and a brown. And that's what the rendering was trying to show and and that unfortunately, that's the difficulty with Zoom sometimes and looking at images. But you can see that it, we were trying to put some variation of that in there without going to a straight brown or or one of these, which are also Googled. When you Google that, they all these all come up, right? Including that, which is probably not going to be the best color for this house.
Right.
Um.
No, but but I think, Paul
This has the variation in it.
Yeah, Paul, they have, um, because I've seen them, there's there is a similar stone texture to what we're wanting to do that has a brown um brownstone, it has a little gray in it, but it's it has enough brownstone that I think would satisfy what the, you know, the commission is looking for.
Right.
We're fine going to that if if we're going to stick with having it wrapped into the front of the house as well. Um, my my expectation of Diane in in what you were saying is if if we keep it a regular, just a regular, you know, cement foundation in the front and and we want to put stone in the back or the sides, we're 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 okay, correct?
Correct, yeah. What if we can't see, if it can't be viewed from a public way, you're you can do whatever you want.
So, you know, Paul, we could take that off offline and figure it out, but um
Okay. Yeah, that's fine, Ron. I was just
Yeah, no, I get it. Yeah.
As it came up, I thought I would try to find something that may be a little bit closer to what we were trying to represent in
Right.
in the rendering.
Yeah, I I I just personally now, and I don't know how other commissioners feel, uh, what you were just showing us, Paul. Um, you know, if you have more of those reds and browns in there, I I that's, I think, much more compatible. I don't know how anyone else
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and that's what we'll try to do.
Yeah, it's it was hard to pick up in that rendering, uh, but they were truly there, but it was hard to see.
Yeah, and I think I think the lower that gets, right, that that helps a lot in that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So
Yeah, keep keeping the profile minimal.
Right, yeah.
It is still, it is strictly on the concrete foundation.
Right. The the only other question I had, Diane, and and you've been doing this uh for a little while um and a bitter feel for it. And Ron, again, you've done a a ton of stuff here. Um, and hopefully you find some of it just to be fun. I enjoyed it, but um Diane, the 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 dormers, and I'm not sure that's the right term for it, but the peaks on the front of the house, um, where, and I'm not sure what the best way to do this, maybe if I try to share my screen, could I do that? Is that possible? Let me do this. This will be, can you guys see?
Yes.
Okay, I was just wondering about this, the roof line here, right? And this treatment where you have the return. Again, it just caught my eye where I'm wondering about that styling. Um.
Chad, I'm not sure that I'm the person to address that. I would look to um maybe Mark.
Um. Yeah, Chad, I think I know where you're going.
I'm looking for our construction guys and Scott and Scott, you know, this is these, this is your your areas of expertise.
Well, what it, I think what's good about doing something like that or doing that um type of return there is it breaks up the the plane or the face of that um dormer or that eve, whatever we're calling that.
Yeah, okay.
Which is, you know, which is good. Um, I, yeah. Ron, architecturally, Paul, um, what style is that? I don't I don't really know if it's stylistic or if it's a true thing that helps with drainage, purposeful.
It it is a little bit of both because if you look at the rendering, we do have a a a deeper overhang profile, which does give some of the depth and the delineation of that dormer section. And and everyone is very much aware of the way we build today. Roof lines, they're quite different, they're constructed, they're constructed in a different way. They're thicker than they used to be, right? They just have to be by our materials. And to just end that in a traditional cut, like a square cut, didn't feel right. And to do it in a traditional, you know, I'll call it a boot for design because everybody's familiar with that. That didn't feel right either, you know? Um, so we ended up just sloping it back like that and it did seem to help with the drainage. It helped to, you know, to define the front area of the house. Um, you know, a bit more, give us some detail up there without, you know, getting too, you know, overboard up there. But um when you do try to reconcile an overhang like that, it is a little challenging.
May the public make a comment?
Yes.
Um, I have that on my house and it's a two hundred year old house.
Great.
That is a historic architecture detail.
Yeah, I couldn't, I I know I've seen it. I couldn't put my finger on the name of it or whatever one would call it historically, but I had seen it. And sometimes it'll go all the way across the entire upper
Ted, do you know what it's called?
Well, it's basically the um original wooden gutters that you'd see on a house of this age had a crown molding look. And that was the return of the gutter or the end piece of the gutter. So it had a little roof over it. It had a a crown molding appearance. It was uh basically how they finished the end of the gutter on the front, the old wooden gutters.
Yeah, that's true.
Crown molding appearance.
Got it.
Are there any any other questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I have a couple, a couple more. Um, so so in the handbook on page um twenty three and twenty four, it's it talks about walkways and driveways. Um, and in essence, you know, it's large expanses of paved surfaces can visually detract from the historic house. So that in mind, when we go to the site plan, it to me, it's sort of what we see, a large expanse of of a paved surface. It seems um certainly with the with the horseshoe or the circle drive, it's it seems like a lot of um, regardless if it's paved or or pavers or even, you know, crushed stone, it's it's a lot of um driveway. Um, and feel free to expound upon that. Um, it's just something I wanted to bring about Diane. I don't know if you have any thoughts about that.
Mark, if you don't mind. I have a comment. Um, really, when you looked at what Ron presented with um appearance of scale to property and home, we have the same horseshoe driveway with the drive up the side, um, which I don't personally think takes away from our historic home.
I got a pretty big driveway.
And and also, um,
You're going to miss one.
Ne- next to um Heather, they also have um a a a substantial driveway too. And and again, I think when you have the house set way back um in proportion, I I don't have a problem with that either.
Okay, all right.
But but this this begs the question, Ron, what were you planning on doing for the um surface for the driveway?
We're, we're doing a regular paved driveway.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, so that was a concern of mine and, you know, we can certainly disagree on that and that's fine. One of the big things for me a couple of weeks ago was still the scale of the house compared to the scale of, of other houses there. Certainly, you know, this house is, you know, it's set back further from the street than Patty's house, but it's, it's certainly more imposing than Patty's house is regardless of how close Patty's house is to the street. And I think, and I could be wrong here, but I think that this house too is, is closer to the street than 34. Is that the Brown's house? Am I seeing that right?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's about three feet closer.
Three feet, that's it. So, so maybe it's just the perspective I'm seeing it from, but it seems closer to the road. And I I appreciate this drawing. I'm, right now I'm looking at the clean site plan drawing. I appreciate that you guys did that. It helps out quite a bit in understanding the house on the site without getting into too many details. And so that helps out a lot and, and thanks for showing that to us. To me, I think this, the house is, is too big on the, on, on the lot, the way it is. And most of that for me is, is the large expanse of that garage, how it, you know, it's a four-car garage and it just kind of guts out, what is that, east of the house? And there, it's such a large expanse that from the road, I think you're really going to see a lot of that.
You, you. You actually, you actually won't because again, as I said 20 minutes ago, we're keeping a lot of the trees to the left side of the property. So where you see the proposed drive, there's a ton of Christmas trees over there. A lot of those will stay. So you'll not see the garage from, from the street level unless you drive down my driveway. You won't see it. And the reason why we have a four-car garage is I have six people in my family. When this is built, I'll have five drivers and I'm, quite frankly, I don't want to have my driveway loaded with cars. I want them parked in a garage.
I want, I want a garage too.
And, and that's why we're having, that's why we're building a four-car garage. Plain and simple. I don't, I do not, I do not want cars sitting on my driveway. I don't like it. And that's why we're going to do it. So.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense. And I appreciate that, but you know, let's say something happens to those trees. If the trees are gone, what are we going to see from the street?
Well, the trees have been there for, I don't know, Ted, how long have those trees been there?
Long as I've been there. But I did, I walked the street today if I could make a comment and I did notice like the Milliards house, it goes very, it's not very wide in the front, but it definitely goes further back. The Marx's house is also another house that has, I don't think it's four-car garage. I think it's a three-car garage. But again, it does extend farther back. So I do see other houses that do extend deep into the rear in, in the neighborhood. So that was my only comment on that.
The, the length is, we see lots of historic homes with a lot of length. That usually sort of has a dropdown to it. And I do think the road helps, right, in terms of the approach of the road with the sightline and really a lot of architecture on that side helps. It, it was, you know, it, it was a concern of mine. I expressed it earlier. You never know, so to speak. And one thing, as an example, it's interesting is Stacy and Garrett's house has a really long tail also. And quite frankly, I mean, this is, I'm not sure if this is necessary or not, for a long time, it, I think it didn't sell because of how it looked. And all they did, ultimately someone finally painted it and it completely changed the look of it. So there are ways to diminish scale in different, in different ways. And I think the, the architecture on that side of the house probably helps, helps a lot. On that you won't catch from the angle of the road as well, that full length.
And the other, and the other thing I would say is, you know, what, what I heard two weeks ago was scale based on the linear front of the house. It, and, and Chad, you did talk about the, the sightlines of the garage, which we addressed with the extra dormer, which I think lends a more character to that side. But I provided a comparison for the commission comparing Ted's linear feet on his, you know, his square footage of, of acreage, my house, Charlie and Heather's house, as well as, you know, Connor's house, which just got approved. And from a linear standpoint, you know, I'm less than two of them. More than Connor's house, but Connor's on a two-acre lot, I'm on a four-acre lot. So I think from a scale standpoint, frontage view, I, I think the, the size of the house is appropriate for the size of the lot.
May I add my input on this? I'm not sure where to start. With Ted's house, it was originally almost eight acres and I know, you know, it was just approved a building lot with your four acres, Ron. But I feel, I don't know, I just got a gut feeling we're trying to squeeze, literally squeeze a very large structure into not the biggest area. And if, it just feels like the houses are getting kind of cramped together. But that's my perspective.
My house was on three and a half acres when I purchased it in 1993. I bought the four acres from Eleanor Case.
I thought your house was on 16 acres originally.
No, not when I bought it. It was originally, if you, it was probably on 100 acres if you wanted to payback, but.
I just thought it was, I thought it was on 16 acres and somebody bought 10 acres from you. But anyways, it's, it's now.
Yeah, I think yours.
Yeah, it's now, this is, I, I feel like a very large structure is trying to get squeezed into a piece of property.
Well, I, I, I disagree, Patty. I mean, I have 130 feet from the corner of my house to your property line.
Yeah, yeah.
And I got 73, 72 and a half feet or 71 and a half feet from the right side of my property to Ted's property line. And his house is another 150 feet away from that property line. So I would very adamantly disagree with me squeezing, you know, a, a 4,000 square foot house roughly into a four-acre lot.
Right.
Ron, what did you say? The, I heard the 130 to Patty's line and what's the other side?
71.2.
I mean, that's, I don't know, like, how, how wide is the lot?
The lot is 230, 30 plus 37, two.
Thirty-seven, right.
Yeah, so two.
Two 16, two 70?
270 feet wide, roughly.
So a legal lot in the, in this zone is 200 feet. So 130 feet from the house to the lot line is a lot.
Yeah.
And I'm just looking at it as preserving the historic look of the area. And, and Connor's house, as you brought up, is only on two acres, but there's no house even close to where he is building. And it's just very, it just gives you a very open field. I don't think that was really a very good example.
Yeah, but there's a lot right next to his house where a house might go up.
That's right next to you.
There's a house right next to my house, which has been there for years. So there are houses that are much closer in the neighborhood.
Yeah. That seems like a pretty big buffer to me, the 130 feet to the, to the property line.
That was just my opinion.
I've got, I've got to be, I've got to be 70 feet from the property line on the north side? Maybe? Not sure if that, between two door down brown. I mean, certain, and, and Ron, what did you say the square footages?
It's roughly, roughly 40, 4,300, 4,400 square feet.
4,300, does that include the garage? Not include the garage?
Does include the garage.
Does, does?
No, does not.
Oh, it does not include the garage?
It does not include the lower, the basement?
You wouldn't count that.
Why would you count the basement?
Yeah, you don't count the basement.
But does that include that there's living space above, above the garage, correct? Your, that's, I believe that was office.
Yeah, there's, there's a small off, there's going to be a small office up there. That's all. It's not living, it's not living, you know, bedrooms or anything like that.
But is that included in the 4,300? Just?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and I guess I'm, I'm looking, I'm, I'm listening to what, what Patty is saying, but I'm looking at the property lines and for instance, from your proposed house, Ron, to the property line, there's still an awful lot of space between you and Ted. Right?
I mean, it's 71 feet to the property line and then Ted's house is probably another 100 plus feet, right? Ted, how far are you from your, from the property line on, on my right?
I think we're 130, 140 feet away.
Yeah.
I would agree with that, Ted. I was about to guess over 150.
Yeah. And the other thing that I was going to say about Ron's on the left side with his garage, you know, there's a peak, a roof that has a, there's like a two-foot overhang. He's got a, an entryway that has a roof over it with the stairs and the railings and the posts that are all blocking that left side perspective. And again, I can, you know, I walk the neighborhood today. There's, there's houses that have the, the garage that bumps out past the edge of the house. At least Ron's is flush with the edge of the house with a structure in front of kind of blocking the, the bays of the garage, which other neighbors have not had anything blocking the garage. My, my garage is not being blocked by any structures. So I think the design on the left side especially, you know, does help block the, that side and those garage doors. So I, I, I just think it's set back very far. I don't think it's going to be an eyesore. I think the garage is farther back than your barn is, Patty, as far as that's concerned. I, I just don't think it's going to be visible. If anything, when you're coming down the road, the way the road turns and everything, I think, you know, you won't really see it. It won't be a, a visible thing.
Patty, I'm looking, I'm looking at again this, this site plan and it looks like the house is just slightly forward of where your barn is, but it's way, it's way to the east of your house. Do you, Patty, can you see the site plan? Did you get that?
I, yes, yeah.
Okay. So I, and I'm, I'm, you know, I'm a commissar of, of what your concern is, but the, you know, again, the space from the house or the garage to the property line, and then there's still space, but it's set back. I mean, this is one of the things that I was appreciative of because you can see that this house is, is, is set way back. It's, it's a little bit forward of Ted's, but it is way behind yours. And probably it looks like the garage is, because it's kind of on an angle, but the garage is kind of back by the barn.
Yeah, it will be. If you, if, if you take a, a view from the lot and you look over to the barn, that's about where the garage, the first part of the garage, garages start and then they go back from there. So it's, it's actually farther back than Patty's barn is where those garages will be.
And again, I know, I know we can't consider it, but let's consider that the, the fact that you are planning on keeping trees and whatnot and.
No, we are, I am. I mean, that's, that, that's paramount to what we want to do. Because I, you know, again, as I said earlier, I want the privacy as well.
Yeah. Are there any other concerns, questions? Patty, I don't know if that answers your concerns.
Here we go. I need to unmute myself. Yeah, it, 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 it. Yeah. I, I kind of, nothing against Ron, he's a very, very nice person and you're going to be my neighbor, so don't be mad at me. I, I, it just, it's a lovely piece of land. It's a lovely area. And if it just had a smaller house on it, I would love that. You know, as it's, it's a scale that, that's, that's bothering me, that's all. It's a very big structure that's going up. That's it.
Okay, recognized, we, we hear your concerns, Patty. Aside from that, so I, are there any other questions? Do I, I guess if we are to move forward, we still have the question about if we were to move to approve the application, we still need to address the stone on the foundation. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
And also the windows and the door. To me, tho- those are the only outstanding issues?
I, I mean, if, if we're all okay with the driveway and the scale of the house, those were the other two things. It seems like maybe I was the only one who cared about the size of the paving in the walkway. But Patty and I seem to disagree with the scale of the house in the area. And I don't, I don't know, that, that could just be us. I don't know if anyone else on the commission agrees with those two things or not. So.
Laura, I'm going to look to you now for advice on how we move forward on this.
Well, you can, excuse me, you can either keep the public hearing open and ask them to supplement the information and they can be invited to our next meeting, which is only again in two weeks. Or you can choose to go forward and close the public hearing. Right now, like I said before, we do have time. You have 65 days since the application's received and that's not including any additional time that we have right now because of COVID measures in place. So it's not that you have to close it tonight, not saying you don't have to close it tonight. You have time if you need it.
I, I do have one question. Do you think the next meeting might be at the town hall? It's just, it's a lot easier.
It could be. I don't know an actual answer for you yet. Unfortunately, we might be doing hybrids. It's possible. Things are changing every week.
All right, thank you.
I would just like to say that the intent of the special meeting is because time is a bit of the essence on this application. And, you know, if we could move forward to it maybe, I don't know if there's a way to move forward with, with the application with three outstanding things, or if they could be clarified as amendments right now through the architect and Ron as being approved as amendments, if they can clarify what they're putting there.
Yeah, we, Heather, we would be happy to do that. I mean, I, as I said last time, that's the reason why I asked for the special meeting. You know, we still have to go through permit, you know, land clearing, digging foundation. And I really want to have the house buttoned up, you know, from an exterior standpoint before the winter. And so I'm happy to, if, if you guys wanted to conditionally approve subject to the windows and address, us addressing a single door versus a double door, I'm happy to do that. And that's, that's going to be four or five months away before we even. And that's, that's gonna be four or five months away before we even, at that point, from a construction standpoint. And we could come back, you know, at the next meeting or, or a meeting after that with answering those questions and satisfying the commission's, uh, recommendation on windows and doors and, and the foundation.
I guess I would, I would ask then Paul, um, my concern is obviously the windows and doors, because that, that's, that's major, uh, you know, in this. Um, and I don't wanna rush it and, but I'm also really sympathetic, Ron, that you wanna get things going on this. So to make the decision about the windows and the door, does that impact in any way, um, the, the building process? Do you know, do you know what I'm saying? You know, are you changing?
I think the only, I, I think the short answer is it will not affect the building process other than without an approval by this, by the board, Ron can't submit for a permit. So it affects the entire permitting process. But it's not gonna affect necessarily the purchasing or the buying out of those items when we start. I think, as I said, I have no issue in other than Ron with dividing the windows.
No, not at all.
I can't specifically say what those proportions would be without putting a real scale to it and looking at it.
Well, does it, does it make sense, because we're, we're just, we're less than two weeks away from our next regular meeting, um, to have a, a decision on windows and doors and stone and then, um, and then go for a C, COA at that point so that you then can move forward on all your permitting? Because if we're still waiting, if we give you a conditional approval, you still can't move forward with your permit, am I correct?
I don't think so. I think if you have, I think, I think, I think if you have, if you give us conditional approval subject to us satisfying the foundation stone, if we're gonna go that route, I'm still deciding on that. Um, the windows and a door, front door, um, we could, we can get that permit approved, uh, pulled.
I would agree.
Okay, is, is that correct?
I, I think it's quite, it's quite common, you know, in, in, in a lot of boards, I don't know about yours in particular, but to approve with conditions like that. I mean, I see this an awful lot in zoning and I, I suspect you have that same authority under your bylaw.
I just don't want, I don't wanna hold them back in the permitting process, because I know it's a whole, there's a whole domino effect.
There is, and that's the problem. So if we, if we wait another two weeks, then I'm probably another three to four weeks out before we're even clearing land. And then I'm into August and then I'm shot for, and the builder's shot for, for finishing the exterior portion, portion of the house so that they could be inside during the winter.
Right, Heather?
Um, I mean, I, I think whatever makes most sense for the process, um, you know, like I said, if, I know time is of the essence. If we can approve or, or at least vote on something this evening that helps move their process, great. If it, if it hinders their process because they can't get permits anyhow, then, you know, I should think whatever is best for, for them in the process.
Yeah, if, if it's conditional, if, if, if you're down to Diane, those items, to, to me, it's kind of like a lamppost. If you're not putting the lamppost in today, you don't have approval with the lamppost, you come back next time. If it's conditional upon doors and XYZ, that seems completely reasonable. Um, I, I would imagine.
Can I say something? Um, is that, so, so, uh, so, Laura, I don't know if we need to close the public hearing now or keep it going, but it seems like Patty and I are on one side and maybe some of the other, uh, members of the, um, commissioner on the other side. Though, if Patty and I don't think that this application essentially doesn't get approved by us because of the scale and some other factors, that's Patty and I's viewpoint. But the other members of the, um, committee, their viewpoint is different. So where do we go from there?
It becomes a vote, you need three affirmative votes, um, to, to pass a certificate of appropriateness.
Right.
So.
Comes about, Diane, I suppose the, the only question I might ask is, and again, um, you've been doing this a little bit longer than, than the rest of us. We've got a couple newbies here. The question of scale probably has come up in other instances, um, on the street. And I, I don't know if you can speak to that in any way. I, I know there was a proposed house and someone came three times, um, on Ellsworth property and.
Yeah, it, it was, it was a, um, it was a large home. It was on a smaller piece of property and it was back dab on the road. So it was the mass of the house, its proximity to the road. And, um, the, uh, I think ultimately, uh, the applicant withdrew their application because we, we came up with some, um, stipulations to minimize the mass. Um, but it was no, I mean, it was, it was close to the road.
And they didn't like it. Yeah, they didn't, they didn't want to do what we suggested.
Exactly, exactly. So, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So let's also keep in mind that, um, this application just came to us two weeks ago and we're doing a special, a special meeting tonight for the applicant. Um, typically to, for a new house in the, in the district, you know, it's not like it just gets approved right away. It takes us a while to do things and it's not like we're sitting back in our hands waiting for things. You, you know, we're out there, we're trying to help you out and help you get through this process as quick as you can, but we need to do our due diligence and make sure that, you know, the things that are in, in the district are kept in, in any new properties that we approve. So I just wanna put that out there. Um, I'm not saying I don't like the house. I think it's a, a nice house. I'm not certain that it fits in the fabric of the district. I think it's too big, the scale is too massive and other factors as well. But that's what we do here on the commission. We disagree with each other. We're still friends at the end of the day and it's okay. So majority rules, um, I, you guys know where I stand. It, it wouldn't, I don't approve.
So do we, do we now close this to public comment?
If you still have questions to be addressed that more details are gonna come out later, leaving the public hearing open might be the best course of action if you wanted to address something later with a special condition or with a separate application for windows to come back. Um, it, it's kind of up to, to you and the applicant on how you wanna break this down.
Are we, can we ask the applicant? Um, so what serves you best right now for us to vote on something or to hold off and wait for your, your information and updates on windows, doors and stone?
If, if all, all I'm being asked to do is update you guys on the windows, changing the windows as Diane suggested, um, going, changing a double door to a single door, which Diane suggested, and changing some color of the stone from, you know, a more reddish, um, you know, darker look than, than a gray stone, then I would ask the commission to approve with those conditions being met and I'll address them either at the next meeting or the meeting after, because we're not even gonna get to the building stage in sixty days. We'll still be doing foundation digging and, and, and site clearing.
Okay, thank you. So I'm, I, I don't have any more, any other questions, so I'm happy to close to the public if everyone else is. I don't know if anyone else has any more questions, Diane.
I don't have questions. Anybody else? Uh, uh, again, I, I, Mark, I'm, I'm trying to be understanding your, your concerns too. Um, do you have objections to closing public comment?
I don't, no, no.
Okay. So we go from here, we close, uh, we then close public comment, Laura?
So the question is, is it's just, are we moving forward to the next meeting or are we closing the public hearing? Because if we're closing the public hearing, then there's no new information that's brought in. You're gonna go to deliberations only on the information that's been presented. If you wanna condition the approval to, under a separate application, I believe you could address those other outstanding things where you could condition the approval to even say a multi-pane window subject to commission approval.
I mean, there's, there's this part of me, please talk to me commissioners, that I would, I would truly love to see this other information be- before we, um, approve, uh, the, the rest of it. I mean, and that's just, that's just my gut. We're talking about two weeks here. Um, Ron, I am totally sympathetic that you wanna get this moving, but it is a huge project and typically we are dealing with additions and smaller projects that can take two meetings, if not more. And, um, we wanted to write by you and the district. And, and so I, I, my feeling is I would just prefer to keep the, the public comment open. We have two weeks, get the rest of the information from you about the windows, the door and the stone, and then move forward at, at that meeting. Um, but I, I asked the other commissioners how they would feel about this.
Um, yes, Diane, Patty, yeah, I agree with you and I don't know if there's any consideration and possibly scaling down the house in size and presenting that as well.
Diane, I appreciate, um, you know, I, I said earlier that additionally, but I also appreciate, you know, seeing the whole, um, and, and you're in Mark's comments that, you know, oh, these things usually take, take more time than the one. Uh, it, it would be rare, you know, so to speak, for something of a project the size.
I mean, you, you've been there, done that, Chad, so, and I, and I think we went through many implementations, you know, so it's.
My life is full of brain damage, so. Yeah, I, I've been before you guys more than once.
So, yeah, so I agree with Patty. That brings us to the point that the, the minimal is the windows, the stone and the door. That's the minimal, but it will the, are we gonna look at the scale of the house?
I think I've, I think I've already addressed the scale of the house.
That, this is to the commission, sorry.
No, I'm just, I'm just, but I'm making a statement as the applicant. I think I've already addressed the scale of the house. I did comparisons, I presented the comparisons. My house is well within other houses that are built on this, in the district. And, and I don't think it's at the size of the lot I have, I do not think the house is disproportionately too large.
Okay, that's, thank you for, for sharing that, Ron. Um, but I do wanna address the rest of the commission in, in the fact that two members on the commission who have been members of the commission for ten years, if not more, I don't know how long you've been there, Patty, but longer than me, have an issue with the scale. So the other, uh, members, it, it's really, it's really up to you guys kind of how we take this and where we go from there. But again, the, the, the minimal we're looking at is the doors, front door, the windows and the stone around the house. Are we gonna consider the scale as well, or is that a moot point? Nah, I guess.
I think that, um, to Ron's point, he did address. Well, I mean, to say you need now to come up with new plans, with a new design, I, I do think we kind of need to say at the next meeting, if, that we, we are still looking for definitives on the stone and the windows and the doors to be clarified, you know, after the recommendations. Um, but I think that, you know, the scale part of it, he did address. And if, if the board doesn't majority vote on that scale, then that's a separate thing. But to say you need to come back and readjust your scale because two of the board members disagree with that right now, um, I kind of think is an inappropriate ask. He's looking for approval for something. We're still looking for clarification now on stonework windows and door. If there's any other real clarifications we need, I think that's important for them to come back with next time because, um, that's helpful with us making a decision. But if, if the applicant isn't interested in changing their home size, then that just needs to go into consideration next time when we vote, or when we finally do end up voting on the applicant.
Yeah, I, I, I have to agree. I think he has provided the site plan and also, um, these, a, a comparison to other houses and, and I personally don't have a problem with especially the, the scale of the house vis a vis where it sits and sitting back. So, um, yeah, I would agree with that. My, my concerns are those, what, what Heather just mentioned and what we will get further clarification on at a, at a meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, I, I agree, Mark. You, you again, expressed the concern. It's, um, there, there are two that, um, you know, expressed that clearly. And look, I, I'm empathetic to that too. Um, I think scale is very difficult. Um, I, I don't think a linear dimension actually expresses scale adequately. Um, it's not a, it's not a small hu- house. Um, in, in the scale of things, you just look at Ted, yours versus this, it's a bigger frontage of a house. The house is not broken up the same way. You have a lot of depth in there. So your primary house, right, on this is much smaller in scale. So scale is not, not a non-issue. I don't think it's a simple, objective, linear measure from, from one side to the other. So I, I am empathetic to that, but, um, I think we have to be clear as a commission, uh, what we're asking or not asking. Um, I, I'm comfortable sort of moving ahead, but you know, it's, uh, it is a little bit in the leap of faith of we'll see it when we see it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Chad, thank you. Um, and you know, I don't, I don't wanna, uh, disagree over something that, um, just presents itself, you know, in a different, like you said, Chad, uh, objective way, if you will, but, um, I, you know, I, again, I'd like to see something smaller on the lot there in the district. Cause you know, what's, well, what's to say in another ten years where, okay, a, a six acre, six acre piece of land is sold and, you know, somebody wants to put an eight thousand square foot house on there. Um, well, ten years ago, they did a four thousand, so, I mean, it's, it's just these small steps are taken and over time, um, it can distract from, from what we're supposed to be doing in the, in the commission. To me, that's my personal opinion. Um, and that, I, I, I don't mind disagreeing. I just, I just, I wanna express where, where I'm standing and, and how I feel about it. So I'm, I'm certainly okay to move forward with whatever the commission agrees upon tonight.
Yeah, a- acknowledging what you're saying, Mark, uh, you know, it's, as you said, we, we agree to disagree going forward. And it's not the first time, not the last time. Um, but, uh, I would propose to, to wait just till the next meeting to see the, the windows, doors and stone. Um, and then move forward with the decision once, once we see that, if, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Yep, I agree with that.
Uh, and. Sorry, I would just like to say that, uh, I don't have a problem with the scale. And, um, I think for Ron, I think it's important that, I think he's done a lot to appease the commission and, uh, he's willing, I mean, personally, I think with, you know, if we said you need brownstone on your foundation, he would do it. If you want a six-pane mahogany door, he would do it. Um, and if you want six over one windows, he would do it.
Um, and if you want six over one windows, he would do it. Um, I understand, you know, from the construction side why he wants to move and I. Thought that was one of the reasons we had this special meeting. Um. But I think he at least deserves, uh. The consideration that the majority or the, has said the scale is fine. So he's not waiting the two weeks with these other things and then the scale. Um, is an issue in two weeks, if, if that's the way we go. So I just wanted, I have, I do not have a problem with the scale. But I, I, I understand Patty and Mark's concern.
Yeah, thanks Scott. I, I, and I appreciate that, but I, I, again, I feel. Two weeks to, to make sure we're looking at the whole package altogether. I don't have, obviously don't have a problem with the scale. I would like to see this. I think it's a lovely home. But before, I, I think it makes it much cleaner if we have all the information. As, and if we can meet in person, it makes such a difference too, to see things. Um, so if we can have the gift of two weeks before we render the final, the final decision. Um, Ron, with your indulgence, um, I'd, I'd like to see that happen.
So two weeks is the week of the 4th of July, correct?
I think we meet on the first, don't we? I, I think our next scheduled meeting is on July 1st.
Okay.
And I will be there.
Is, is this an in-person meeting that you're holding?
We're hopeful.
We hope so.
So if in fact it is an in-person meeting. Um, are you looking for samples at an in-person meeting? Of the stone, for instance? I mean, is that?
That would, yeah.
That's what we normally do in in-person meetings. I, I just want to make sure that Ron. As the applicant understands exactly what's going to be expected. So we don't run into. You know, something like this again, where we don't have a conditional approval. And, and then have to move forward because we don't have the, the correct sample or, or variety of samples. Um, so I would just, you know, as, as Ron's architect, I would just like for some, some clarity as to what. Might be expected, you know, on that, on that night.
Well, personally, what I'm looking for, uh, you know, e- even if we, I, I just, in person is always better, but. Excuse me, even if we're zooming, Paul, what I would love to see. What I need to see is an example of the decision on the windows, the door and the stone. And images, I mean, if you can give us, you know, a real image, I am comfortable with that. I don't know about the other commissioners, but I just want to see the real, the real deal. In a picture.
Agreed. Yeah, it, it makes a big difference. We typically, we pass the materials around. We all take a look at them and, and hand them back here. That's really all it is. So just we get our hands on them and see what, you know, what's going to be installed in the house. That's.
I think Paul's, Paul's question is to be specific about what, what materials maybe we.
Sure. So the windows, maybe a sample of the door and the garage door, maybe a sample of the siding. And then, um, the stone, the stone veneer that's going on the foundation.
So that's a mahogany door and I can tell you right now, I'll never get a sample.
So I.
The same with the garage door. I can get images, but I can't get samples.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, and if I can, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you Heather. I don't think the, the garage door was up for discussion. I think we had kind of, we were okay.
That one was okay.
I, I, I think that one was, was okay. Again, I'm looking for an image, Paul. I don't need an example. Uh, of, of the window itself. I would just like to see what you're doing. I would like to see an image of the door.
No problem.
Um, and again, with the stone, you know, just, and, and stone is, I know it's, if you've had dealt with stone before, so it's a matter of what you end up with in, in the lot. Um, but, uh, just if you can give us more information, so.
I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that. In the next two weeks here, you know, Ron as the applicant and myself as the architect know. What the board is looking for on these three items so that we can provide them. You know.
And, and, and I correct.
Yeah.
With, with the other commissioners, these are just the three items that, that are in question at the moment that we need to get more information on.
Correct.
I mean, Chad, Heather, Scott. Who wants to guess?
Sorry. I don't know who is talking, sorry.
Um, if I could just say, I, I do think we need to clarify, you know, what it is exactly that we're, that's still open items. If it is the stone windows and door. And in the past, it's not always a physical. It's, it's similar to what Diane said. It can be images sometime. Often have people would bring brochures in of the act, the material from the, um, company. Um, so there's that as well, um, as options to show.
And that way, if we have to be on Zoom, I mean, we're seeing an image of what we're talking about.
Okay.
Chad, were you going to say something? I'm sorry. I think I interrupted.
No, nope. I didn't say anything. Again, I was just trying to say, let's be clear. Let's not show up in the next meeting and say, I thought you were going to bring X.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Define.
Yeah, no, agree. So the, the, the understanding is then at the next meeting, we will see at least images of the window, door and stone. So that we can then render a decision. And commissioners, am I correct in this? Is that what our?
That's what I hear. Yep.
Scott, my chat, Heather? Okay, so, um, Laura, then we, how, how do we leave this then to, because we're still leaving public?
Yeah, you can continue the public hearing to the next regular meeting, which is scheduled for July 1st.
Okay, do I need to say that?
It's helpful.
Can we continue the public hearing until the next regularly scheduled meeting on July 1st? Do we have a sense?
Promotion.
Am I, yeah, I do, can, before we do it, can I just ask, are commissioners going to be available for them? Because this is real, this is really important, um, and I, you know, I've been around that bend with trying to make sure we have quorum. Um. Again, because we're going into July 4th weekend. It's the Thursday before the 4th of July.
Uh, this is Patty and I'm pretty sure I will not be available.
Okay.
I will be here if, yeah, I can be here.
Okay, Scott, are you?
Yes.
Chad, are you going to be around?
Um. I'm not sure I can commit to be in person. So I don't know what's happening once we have in-person meetings. Is there no Zoom, uh, capabilities?
Town is discussing doing a hybrid meeting. I don't have all the details yet because they have, as far as I know, they haven't told me as the decision.
But there's a, if it's not in person, there's a potential of doing Zoom or hybrid?
There, there is a, I, I'll have to. I don't know if we're even switching a hundred percent back to in-person meetings yet. They haven't told me that, so I don't.
Okay, so hybrid, hybrid could work then for you, Chad?
Yes.
Zoom, Zoom or hybrid would work, correct?
Yeah.
And Mark?
Um, I would have to be virtual. Yeah, so Zoom.
Okay, so it's, I mean, we have enough people then that we can. Okay, okay, so, um, would anyone like to make a motion to, uh, continue public hearing? Okay, I'll make a motion to. To continue our public hearing until our next regularly scheduled meeting, July 1st.
And I second that. Oh, there that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Are we good, Laura? Okay, um, Ron, Ron and Paul, thank you so much for your patience in this. We truly just want to. That, we're, we're so happy to have you in the neighborhood, Ron, truly, and want to make sure that this goes through without any other hitches and, and. Um. And appreciate your understanding on this.
Thank you.
Anything else?